Coram of twenty-five being present, I call our 2022 Annual Town Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and join us if you wish, Mr. Carl Keener. Please be seated, thank you, thank you Carl. Good evening fellow citizens and voters of Southampton, I am Robert Floyd, your town moderator. It's a pleasure to serve you, thank you for re-electing me, it's indeed an honor. For full transparency and disclosure, I also serve you being Southampton Cemetery Commissioner, Superintendent of our three cemeteries, Southampton Historical Society Board Member. There is no compensation to me nor financial benefit for any of these privileges to serve you. Our town meeting is a business meeting of Southampton, our legislative branch session called pursuant to a posted warrant, the official record of what will be discussed and the only topics on which our town meeting tonight may actually take action. I will read the warrant, warrant returned Southampton pursuant to the within warrant. I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Southampton by posting an attested copy at the Southampton Town Hall and five or more other places designated for the posting of such notices seven days before holding said meeting, Jared Hamel, May 26, 2022. May we have a moment of silence now in keeping with Southampton's culture for those who have moved on ahead since we have last met? Thank you. Tonight our annual town meeting, our first indoor one in three years, is being sent out live on Public Cable Access Channel 191. Thank you Tim Riley and Ryan Arnold and staff and East Hampton Media. Articles into a warrant that is posted in at least five locations and warns the people of a legislative meeting. You have heeded the warning, it used to be mandatory and tardies were fined, now it is our purest form of democracy. The executive branch of our town's government, our select board, finance committee, treasurer, collector, accountant, clerk, town administrator have worked hard to create and weigh in on the articles for tonight's town meeting warrant, their work is done. Speaking of work, the executive branch of a town government has numerous vacancies for the various commissions and committees. We, being the town's legislative branch, cannot discuss yet, if interested, contact Town Hall for details. Thank you, you are welcome. Although some of these executive branch members sit up front by our tradition, they individually do not have more of a vote nor say tonight than any of you in our annual town meeting. Town moderator rules, not town council's legal opinion applied while our town meeting is in progress. Town meeting is exempt from mass open meeting law. Boards and commissions need not post forty-eight hours in advance as are required outside of town meeting when they attend a town meeting. Also, members of boards and commissions are allowed to deliberate inside a town meeting. Members and board members are forbidden to deliberate together outside of a properly posted meeting of theirs when there is a quorum of their members. Yes, deliberate, never mind voting. Your moderator permits cur commercial TV cameras, a privilege not a right, if and only if they agree to remain in the back of the town meeting room on the far side of the floor line or outside the building, not in aisles or hallways. Duties of a moderator. My role as your town moderator is to facilitate, provide an open process that voters trust, and administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner, fully and partially consistently, regardless of who you are, not assure any particular outcome. I ensure those who wish to address this town meeting have opportunity and ensure the integrity of our town meeting stays as intact as possible. Both sides need to be heard on each article. No one has ever been denied to speak at a town meeting I have moderated. Moderator's authority is over process, not outcome. I leave the outcome to you, the fully informed voters. Procedures accomplish things instead of manipulating town meeting proceedings. I help every dedicated voter as I serve the town, so if you're inexperienced here, hold you back, allow me to walk through the process tonight. Anyone may challenge my process with a point of order yelled from your seat. I invite you to the mic where you then describe what pending action is frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, contrary to proper procedure. Any attempt to misuse that as a vice to usurp the floor will be dealt with firmly. Duties of voters, your responsibility, be the legislative branch of a town government for tonight's articles. You have power to make laws, the power of the purse, and to exercise your freedom of speech. Speaking and participating at town meeting is a right, but like all rights, it should not be abused nor denied. It's important to set ground rules, courtesies and guidelines early, then stick with them. Town meeting is a legislature subject to its own rules within the Commonwealth laws. It needs rules, one of my duties as your moderator, to protect rights of individuals against illegal encroachment, unintentional, unintentional, or otherwise. Our town meetings are conducted in accordance with general laws, our bylaws, traditional customs and practices we have followed for many years with guidance by the principles and rules of conduct in town meeting time, a handbook of parliamentary law. It's an organic process as our custom traditions and practices evolve. Once a motion is read and I have asked to receive a second, then I invite a pro, then a con statement. All discussions must be relevant to a motion under a warrant article and within the scope of each article before us, merits or lack thereof for the motion. It's when after a comment is ruled out of order or scope, the speaker continues to debate the moderator, that's when the speaker is directed to sit down. Speaking at the mic, ready to contribute something new, please approach the mic up front, stand in line to be recognized by the moderator, first come, first heard, I recognize speakers only standing at the mic unless it's a point of order. Address the moderator, state your name and address clearly. Please direct your questions and answers to me, your town moderator. This is designed to prevent lecturing, bullying, intimidation and cross-examinations. Through the years, we have subtly nearly eliminated lecturing, bullying, intimidating, intimidating and cross-examinations in our town meetings, not too shabby. Town meeting conduct is the moderator's responsibility as authorized by our general laws, Chapter 37, Subchapter 15 and 17. You are invited to speak up to five minutes at a time, provided you stick to the subject of the motion at hand, no more than two times per article, except to correct an error or answer a question. Please allow everyone an opportunity to be heard before you request to be heard a second time on an article. Remarks concise to the point. I will allow anyone who previously spoke to address the meeting a second time with a new point or rebuttal, no repetition, no repetition. Before you vote yes or no, you individually are free to question, to amend, not encouraging this and will not discourage this either, and to table or kill any motion that is legislate, all in a civilized way. Cross-examinations are out of order. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, lecturing, personal attacks will not be allowed. Anyone unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed after the third warning, so let this be our first warning. Anyone unsatisfied with lack of information for an article may motion to adjourn the town meeting to a time certain for the presenter to obtain the necessary info. Our pre-appointed counters, when needed, will count a section as a pair, then compare counts, when they do not agree, count resumes for a complete inaccurate count to be announced out loud so all can hear. They count front to back. Rights to speak, these rules of the coram are unique to town meeting. Any reasons to move the order of articles tonight? Saying none, we'll keep it as it is. Outside speakers, as is our custom, we will vet somebody new to address you, I will read their names, Bridget Likely from Kestrel Land Trust, Jess Mastriani from East Hampton Media. Without objection, these non-voters with an interest will be permitted to speak in this and future town meetings. Hearing no objections, we proceed, thank you. Deputy Moderator, I thank Carl Keener for his valuable service as deputy town moderator for six years or so. Tonight, we elect a new deputy town moderator, I present to you Doric Dodds, without objection. Doric will serve as deputy town moderator. Hearing no objection, will the town clerks swear Doric Dodds in as deputy town moderator? Thank you. Simply because someone states something does not make it true. Majority leaning towards approving or denying does not make it right by itself. Listen courteously, first vote exactly as you think right. Thank you all for your patience and respecting everyone tonight, these guidelines will assist us in a more efficient meeting. May I hear a motion for Article One, please?
Okay, Mr. Moderator, move that the town amend Article Seven of the town's general bylaws entitled General Government by amending the existing languages noted, deleting existing language where noted in Section Two, and replacing it with the new language as shown in bold-faced text as set forth in Article One of the warrant for the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, Chris Fowles, member of the Bylaw Committee. Just to note that this amendment to this bylaw is on one provision of this, simply to change the length of time and make it a little bit more open-ended, that right now it has a one-year limit for a contract, and many of our contracts are actually three years, sometimes five years, so this is making it consistent with mass general law.
Thank you, would anybody like to speak in opposition to this article? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article One, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article One passes unanimously, may I hear a motion for Article Two, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town amend Article Twenty-four of the town's general bylaws entitled Fees to the Town Treasury by amending the existing languages noted, deleting existing language where noted, and replacing it with the new language as shown in bold-faced text as set forth in Article Two of the warrant for the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Chris Fowles, Bylaw Committee, again, this is just updating a bylaw that is there that dates back from 1987, this makes it a little bit more specific in terms of having the town officers turn in any fees that they have received into the town treasury within the fiscal year.
Thank you, anyone like to speak in opposition of the motion of this article? Thank you Carl Keener for disinfecting the mics again tonight.
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Meadow Road, Chair of the Finance Committee. The intent of the original bylaw was to allow the collector to retain as part of their salary any fees that they would have collected at that point in time. It wasn't about turning money into the treasury, it was about them being able to retain those fees. And back in 1987, when they took this out was so that they could, they wouldn't get to keep the fees anymore and those amounts of money was rolled into their salary, so the new bylaw really isn't relevant to the purpose of the original bylaw.
Thank you, anybody else would like to speak on this article? Seeing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Two, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The article passes by majority, may I hear a motion for Article Three, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town delete Article Twenty-seven of the town's general bylaws entitled Solid Waste/Landfill as set forth in Article Three of the warrant for the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Chris Fowles, Bylaw Committee, this is one that's more of an administrative cleanup issue as we no longer have a landfill, we do have a transfer station now, so this bylaw as written is no longer relevant.
Thank you, would anybody want to speak in opposition of the motion of this article? Anybody want to speak at all, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Three, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Three passes unanimously, may I hear a motion for Article Four, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town delete Article Twenty-eight of the town's general bylaws entitled Commercial ID Stickers/Landfill as set forth in Article Four of the warrant for the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on the motion for Article Four, please?
Chris Fowles, again, the same rationale as for the previous bylaw, this is referring to the landfill and ID stickers at the landfill which are no longer relevant, given that we have a transfer station.
Thank you, anyone who want to speak in opposition to the motion under Article Four? Anybody want to speak at all, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Four passes unanimously, may I hear a motion for Article Five, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town amend Article Fifteen of the town's general bylaws entitled Soliciting Prohibited by amending the existing languages noted, deleting existing language where noted, and replacing it with new language as shown in bold-faced text as set forth in Article Five of the warrant of the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this motion for Article Five?
Chris Fowles, Bylaw Committee, this article is actually being recommended to delete the existing language in Article Fifteen and replace it with the revised language in the boldface. The proposed change here is to provide more guidance and clarity, more definition as to whose responsible levels of enforcement and what can and cannot be done, it's got a lot more specificity as you note compared to what had already been on the books for a long time. And this is a request that had come to the committee from several residents asking us to work on the bylaw specifically for soliciting and canvassing.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak in opposition of this motion under Article Five? Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion on Article Five passes by majority, may I hear a motion for Article Six, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town amend Article Twenty-three of the town's general bylaws entitled Numbering of Buildings by amending the existing languages noted, deleting existing language where noted, and replacing it with the new language as shown in bold-faced text as set forth in Article Six of the warrant for the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, Chris Fowles, Bylaw Committee, this numbering of Buildings article, we're proposing to delete the existing language and replace it with revised language. This too is an article that provides more specificity and especially was written to revise to talk more to the interest of public safety and to facilitate emergency responses for our town responders to have a comprehensive system, especially for the new housing going up in town and a numbering system that's consistent with that.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of this article motion under Article Six? Come right up to the mic. You don't have to be recognized in the audience, if you have something to say, you can come right up to the mic even when somebody's speaking.
Jim Ceni, High Street, it's not so much opposition as a question?
Sure.
Is this requiring property owners to affix a number on their house?
I will have somebody answer that.
If you notice, in Section Seven, I believe, it just recommended that all existing homes and buildings comply with it, just to facilitate emergency responses, it's not being required, it's just a recommendation that existing houses and buildings do that, just so people can find you in case of an emergency.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, anybody else would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll vote. The motion under Article Six, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Six passes by majority, may I hear a motion for Article Seven, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept Article Forty-nine of the town's general bylaws entitled Naming of Public Buildings, Structures, Bridges and Public Lands as set forth in Article Seven of the warrant for the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Francine Tishman, member of the Bylaw Committee.
A little closer, Francine, a little closer.
Okay, Francine Tishman, member of the Bylaw Committee, this is a new bylaw, not revising any existing bylaws, and you know, as we are hopefully growing and building new structures and so forth, there are a lot of people whose efforts and contributions have made a difference, and in memory of those people over the years, this creates a process whereby structures and rooms and bridges and buildings, et cetera, can be named on behalf of those contributing individuals. So this provides us with a process so that it is an equal opportunity for people to nominate people that they feel are deserving of this recognition.
Thank you, anyone wish to speak in opposition of the motion under Article Seven? Anybody have any questions, anybody else wishes to speak, seeing none, we'll vote. The motion for Article Seven, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion on Article Seven passes unanimously, may I hear a motion for Article Eight, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate $139,895 from free cash to the capital stabilization fund.
Second.
I usually ask for a second, but I'll take the second. That's in case they read something different, right or wrong, or in the future somebody has an amendment, so I'm always asking for that second, but teamwork, I love it. Who would like to speak on the motion for Article Eight, please?
Ed Gibson, Town Administrator, by policy, at least thirty-five percent of the certified free cash each year is requested to be approved, to be put into capital stabilization, thirty-five percent is approximately $118,000. The Select Board asked me to place any remaining free cash over and above what might be used for town meeting warrant articles into that capital stabilization, so that amount is $139,895.20.
Thank you, anyone wish to speak against the motion for Article Eight? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion under Article Eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Eight passes unanimously, may I hear a motion for Article Nine, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $101,412.60 from free cash to the operational stabilization account.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this? Thank you, Ed.
Ed Gibson, Town Administrator, by that same policy, the $101,412.60 is the thirty percent of the certified free cash that we're requesting to be put into operational stabilization.
Thank you, anyone wish to speak in opposition of this motion? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote, and motion for Article Nine, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Nine passes unanimously, may I hear a motion for Article Ten, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $33,804.20 from free cash to the other post-employment benefits account.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, the $33,804.20 meets the ten percent requirement of that policy for the certified free cash.
Thank you, anyone wish to speak in opposition of motion under Article Ten? Any questions, anybody else like to speak? If not, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion under Article Ten, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Ten passes unanimously, and at this rate, I promise to have you all home by midnight. May I hear a motion for Article Eleven, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer a total of $3,831.18 for the twelve previous fiscal year bills as listed in Article Eleven of the warrant for the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting warrant, and to pay the ZBA, that's the zoning board of appeals, invoices from their revolving account and other invoices to transfer funds from the appropriate expense account to the prior year bills account, for the unpaid bills from McKesson, of which there are two, CBS, LPVC for Norris School, of which there are four, Hampshire Regional for Norris School, Whitmer Public Safety Group and All Traffic Solutions.
Thank you, motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, these invoices were received after the close of the fiscal year. By statute, they have to be approved by town meeting by a four-fifths vote, and we would be, once approved, these would be either paid for by the appropriate revolving funds or transferred into the previous fiscal year bills account to be paid.
Okay, thank you, anyone want to speak in opposition on the motion on Article Eleven? Any questions? Anybody want to speak at all? Seeing none, just know that we need a four-fifths majority for approval, all in favor of the motion on Article Eleven, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Eleven passes unanimously, meeting our four-fifths requirement, majority. May I hear a motion for Article Twelve, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into five-year contract for the copy machine leases at Town Hall and for the police station for the Police Department as presented in Article Twelve of the warrant for the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, the- Mr. Moderator, the leases on the Town Hall and the Police Department copiers are up. By statute, we are allowed to only automatically go to a three-year lease or a contract. So we are requesting that the town meeting approve a five-year lease for these two new copy machines for both the Police Department and the Town Hall.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of Article, motion under Article Twelve? Any questions? Anyone want to speak at all? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion under Article Twelve, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Twelve passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Thirteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate $18,980,642.31 to fund all municipal departments and the public schools during the fiscal year 2023, as shown in the town's annual operating budget for fiscal year 2023, and to fix salaries for all elected officials as shown and identified in the column labeled FY 2023 Recommended Budget from Taxation, $17,500 from WPAT Loan, and $100,000 from the ambulance fees. With these three different funding sources, the total operating budget for FY 23 is $19,098,142.31.
Thank you. Motion made or I or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This is where the moderator divides the question. I believe it's too large a sum to vote all at once, so we're going to divide the question into sections of the budget. We're going to talk about each section. If you have any questions, please address them then while we're under the umbrella of that section. We're going to vote for each section. And then when we're all done voting for all the sections, there's no need to vote on the whole budget because we voted properly for each section. So the first one is general government. Anyone would like to address that, please? Any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll vote. All those in favor of the figure for general government, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. General government passes unanimously. Public safety? Any questions, any concerns for the public safety budget? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor for the figure under public safety, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The budget for public safety passes unanimously. Education? Anyone wish to address that? Any questions for the education budget? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the figure for education budget, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The education budget passes unanimously. Public works? Any questions, any concerns on that?
It's $215.
Sorry, what happened?
You said $225.
$215, so I'll repeat. $958,000, thank you. $215.07, my bad. Any questions, concerns for the public works budget? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the figure in the public works budget, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The figure for public works passes unanimously. Health and Human Services? Any questions, concerns for that budget? Seeing none, we'll vote on the Health and Human Services budget. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. That budget passes unanimously. Culture and Recreation? Any questions and comments? Culture Recreation Budget, seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the budget figure, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. That budget passes unanimously. Employee Benefits? Any questions, any concerns of the budget for employee benefits? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the budget for employee benefits, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The budget for employee benefits passes unanimously. Debt Service Principal? No sense. Any questions, any concerns? All those in favor of the figure on the Debt Service Principal, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It passes unanimously. And Debt Service Interest? Any questions, any concerns for the Debt Service Interest? All in favor of that amount, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. That passes unanimously. And the budget of $19,098,142.31 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Fourteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote the budget of the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund as presented in Article Fourteen of the warrant for the June 7, 2022 annual town meeting.
Motion made or I or second?
Second.
Who would address this, please?
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. This is our Transfer Station Enterprise Fund budget. There are no changes in the fees this year. We were able to keep them the same. And the biggest change is that we have had to replace two of our recycling containers at a cost of $22,500.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of the motion under Article Fourteen? Any questions, any concerns? Okay, we'll vote for the motion under Article Fourteen. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Fourteen passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Fifteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the budget of the Water Department Enterprise Fund as presented in Article Fifteen of the warrant for the June 7, 2022 annual town meeting.
Motion made or I or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak for this? A little closer.
Yeah. Timothy Goddard, Water Commissioner. So this budget is, it's, a third of the budget is salaries, a third is debt service, and the other third is split between operating expenses and capital outlay.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak in opposition of the motion under Article Fifteen? Any questions? Anybody wish to speak in general? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Fifteen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying no, nay. The motion for Article Fifteen passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Sixteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate a total of $47,930 from free cash to the debt highway account, $47,000 in principal and $930 in interest for the FY 23 debt payment on the debt highway dump truck new.
Motion made or I or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak for this, please?
Mr. Moderator, this would allocate or appropriate free cash in the total of $47,930 to pay the fiscal year 23 debt payment of principal and interest on the highway dump truck. This is, will be the next-to-last debt payment on it, so it'll be one more in 2024.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition for this motion under Article Sixteen? Any questions? Anybody wish to speak in general? Seeing none, we'll vote. And the motion under Article Sixteen, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Sixteen passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Seventeen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate a total of $15,000 from free cash to the account for Mass Trails Grant Match for design and engineering costs for the Greenway Bike and Pedestrian Trail if the town receives the grant.
Motion made or I or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, the town through the Greenway Committee has...
Yes, come to the mic. Okay, okay, good look. You can't hear you just...
If I can get untangled. The town through the Greenway Committee has applied for a $200,000 Mass Trails Grant for design and engineering for the Greenway, the bicycle and pedestrian path. There is a required match for that, so this would appropriate $15,000 if we receive that grant from free cash.
We have the fans on, and it does muffle the sound, and that's unfortunate. We'll try our best here. For those who may not, maybe get a little closer, I'm sorry. Anybody wish to... Sorry?
Why don't you turn your microphones up, boy, you hear that?
We have seats down front.
Can they turn them up? Yeah, okay, will do. Thank you. Teamwork, done. Anybody want to speak in opposition of Article, where are we? Seventeen, thank you. Any questions? Anyone wish to speak at all? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion on Article Seventeen. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Seventeen passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Eighteen, please?
I'm reading something a little bit different from what you have. Article Eighteen, "Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind the portion of the vote on Article Twenty-Five from the June 12, 2021 annual town meeting warrant, which was to appropriate the sum of $270,000 as a debt exclusion to acquire the right-of-way for the Greenway Rail Trail Bike and Pedestrian Path."
Motion made or I or second?
Second.
And this is done changing the motion so we don't have to amend the original Plan A for the motion, so it streamlines, saves time, and it fits in the four corners of the article. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, this would rescind the financial borrowing and debt exclusion vote that was taken at the June 12, 2021 annual town meeting. At that time, CPC funds were not allowed to be used for the acquisition. Subsequently, in July of 2021, when the state budget was passed, there was an amendment that actually changed that and allowed CPC funds to be used for this purpose. So at the December 2021 special town meeting, there was an article on that which was approved for $270,000 to utilize CPC funds for the acquisition. The thought being that we had the CPC funds available, CPC was amendable to that, and this would take the additional tax burden of the debt exclusion off our residents and businesses. Therefore, now that that passed in December, we are asking to rescind the financial portion of that June 2021 vote so we can take this off our financial books.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of the motion for Article Eighteen? Any questions, any concerns? Seeing none, we'll vote for the motion under Article Eighteen. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye and by the simple majority. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Nineteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $231,000 to purchase a new wheel loader for the use of the Highway Department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow the sum of $231,000 under General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, One, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, provided, however, that the appropriation authorized hereunder shall be contingent on the approval by the voters of the town of a so-called Proposition Two and a Half Debt Exclusion under General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Twenty-one, C, with respect to the repayments of the amounts authorized to be borrowed by this vote. The total amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any trade-in value the town receives for the wheel loader to be replaced with this purchase, which amount shall be applied to offset the purchase price of the new wheel loader.
Motion made or I or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. Chris summarized it pretty well. This is replacement of our twenty-seven-year-old John Deere 544G loader and snowplow. We use it for clearing the roads in the wintertime, and it is a, for purchase of a new 544G with a snowplow.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of the motion under Article Nineteen? Any questions, any concerns? This is borrowing. Our bylaws require us to use paper ballot.
I just, I just want to confirm, this is the voter that we...
Your name.
I'm sorry, Jessica McConnell, 24 High Street. This is the, this, we voted at election for this already, yes? So this is the two-step process, the first step? This is the same vehicle?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're going to use our pink ballot. You're going to rip it in half, and you're going to vote yes or no, depending on your heart, and you keep the other half in your pocket somewhere because we won't need it for the rest of the night. We're going to pass a box around, and you put your vote, yes or no, in the box. And it needs a two-thirds majority. We won't hold up the meeting while the counters are counting the paper ballots. Some towns have everybody get up, stand in line, be-handed one of these paper ballots, watched how they rip it in half, let them put one in the box, and then they take the other one and put it in the trash can. That takes a very longer time, much longer time than our method. So if anybody hasn't voted, just stick your hand up so that they don't miss anybody. And we need a box up front also for the tables up front. Everyone voted? Up there's hands up there as you're walking. Up there's hands up there as you're walking. Up in the back against the wall, somebody needs to vote? Yes? Oh, we thought we saw a hand up, we're not sure. Okay, last call. Anyone who has not voted, put that hand up with the pink. Seeing none, everyone's voted. Okay, they'll count, we'll go on. Article 20. May I hear a motion for Article 20, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer $7,500 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to fund the cost of an engineer to define the scope and specifications for the repair of masonry issues on the exterior of the building at the Norris Elementary School.
Motion made. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak for this, please? Anyone here from the Norris School?
Yes.
Aliza Pluta, Principal Norris School. This is to repair masonry, I believe. Yes, that's the first one. We have... Is this for the engineer? I'm sorry, I was... I didn't realize I was coming up so quick. This is the masonry one?
Yes.
The engineer?
Yes.
Okay. So there are several areas around the building where we have the bricks, which are actually blocks. Some are in, some are out. They need to be pointed. Structurally, there it may be damaged, so we need an engineer to come in and give us a really good idea of what's happening. It's really just for that.
Okay.
And then we would put it on the capital plan next year to do the repairs. So this is just for the engineer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone wish to speak in opposition of the motion on Article 20? Anyone have any questions, any comments for this motion on Article 20? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion on Article 20. All in favor, needs a two-thirds majority. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 20 passes unanimously, meeting a two-thirds majority requirement. I hear a motion for Article 21, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $56,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the Highway Department capital budget to fund the replacement of the heating system for the town highway garage.
Motion made. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak for this, please?
Randall Kemp Highway Superintendent, this will replace an ancient steam boiler that we have at the Highway Department. It is currently in need of repair, so I think instead of spending money on repairing this ancient piece of equipment, we should invest in a more efficient heating system and hopefully save some money that way.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition for the motion? Any questions? Comments? Anybody wish to speak at all? Seeing none, we'll vote for the motion on Article 21. It needs a two-thirds majority. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying no, nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 22, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $7,400 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the Norris Elementary School capital budget to fund the repairs to the roof at the elementary school.
Motion made. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Aliza Pluta, Principal Norris School. During an initial observation of this, the base of the barrel roof area above the library was determined to have failing coating, which conjoins the seam between the metal and the masonry stone. The failing coating is allowing water to infiltrate the building, so it's a constant link in the library and in the hallway outside the entrance of the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone who wish to speak against this motion?
Not to speak against, but I'm wondering how old the roof is that we're speaking of, and is the current damage indicative that the entire roof is in danger?
Okay. Anybody would like to address that?
I will do the best I can. This is my eighth year here at Norris School, and I know the roof was done prior to my arrival, so it might be 12 years old. Anything that we could have fixed using the warranty of the roof has been fixed already. In the first couple of years that I was here, we had the major problems. This is not related to that, and it's the cost of getting an aerial lift and putting the coating up and things like that, so it doesn't have anything to do with the roof.
Okay. Thank you. That answer your question? Great. Anybody have any comments, questions for the motion on Article 22? Needs a two-thirds majority. Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 22, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 22 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 23, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $13,200 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the Cemetery capital budget to fund the installation of new replacement water lines in the center cemetery.
Motion made. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, this $13,200 would be in addition to the $9,700 which was appropriated at last year's annual town meeting after the fact it was discovered that there was additional requirements that were required by the town water department to for that water line and the irrigation to be added, and the original quote that was received was not prevailing wage. So these two pieces together would allow the water to be turned to be redone and then turned back on at the center cemetery.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition for the motion on Article 23? Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 23. Needs a two-thirds majority. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 23 passes unanimously. So for Article 19, 95 yeses, four nays, and it passed with the two-thirds majority requirement. Yeah, I'll do it again. Okay. May I hear a motion for Article 24, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $18,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the Fire EMS capital budget to fund the purchase of a new brush fire and rescue UTV and trailer to be used for brush fires and rescue of individuals by the Fire EMS and police departments.
Motion made. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
John Workman, Fire Chief. Mr. Moderator, this is an all-terrain vehicle. In the past, we do not have one in our complement now. When we've needed one for rescue, for recovery...
A little louder, John. Sorry.
It's an all-terrain vehicle. In the past, we do not have any such vehicle. In the past, when we've needed one for rescue or recovery, we've waited up to an hour to get one from our surrounding community. We are using some money from capital expense. We are also using some money collected from the burn permit money to buy this vehicle and a trailer to go with it. The vehicle will get personnel into wildland fires. It'll have... It has a provision for a stretcher so that we can do rescue operations, and it will certainly add to our complement so that we can get in faster to an event.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of this article? Motion on Article 24? Any comments? Anybody wish to question, speak? Okay, we'll vote. We need a two-thirds majority. All in favor of the motion on Article 24, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion on Article 24 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 25, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to transfer appropriate $50,000 from the Public Educational and Government, otherwise known as PEG Access Capital Fund to the town's PEG Access designee, East Hampton Media, to fund the replacement, upgrade, and installation of the PEG TV broadcasting, streaming, and recording equipment at their facility for the purposes of broadcasting on the local cable channels. Additionally, funds will be used to update and upgrade studio and field production equipment used by members of the staff.
Motion made. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Mastriani, Executive Director of East Hampton Media. So just as a matter of clarification regarding these funds, these are not part of the general fund. This money actually comes through Charter Communications in the form of a grant, and that is a part of a stipulation with the contract the town has with Charter. We are at the halfway point of that 10-year contract, so this money became available. And so basically, that's the gist of that. And yes, this money will be used to fund capital improvements for our organization.
Okay. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition? Thank you. Yes? Amanda?
Louder.
Yeah. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. Motion on Article 25? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 25 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 26, please?
Mr. Moderator, I have a modified motion.
Yes.
Move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation to authorize the grant of an additional package store liquor license as set forth in Article 26 of the warrant, provided however that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes to form only to said bill unless the Select Board approves amendments thereto prior to enactment by the General Court, and provide further that the Select Board is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition.
Motion made. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
John Lumbrough, Select Board, College Highway. At the request of Puzza's Pure Food Market, I put this forward for consideration. They're requesting to modify or increase their beer and wine package store license to an all-alcohol package store. Being at our quota, we have to go through the Home Row petition in order to increase by one.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of the motion on Article 26? Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. Motion for Article 26. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 26 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 27, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to authorize each written demand issued by the collector, a fee of $25 be added and collected as part of the tax as authorized by Mass General Law, Chapter 60, subsection 15, effective as of July 1, 2022.
Motion made. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak for this, please?
This is to increase the demand fee from $15 to $25 to help cover costs associated with the billing of demands, and also it will help to increase revenue for the town.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of the motion under Article 27? Any questions? Comments? If anyone want to speak? If not, we'll vote for the motion under Article 27. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 27 passes unanimously. Okay, I didn't hear it. Thank you. Teamwork passed by majority. Thank you. May I hear a motion for Article 28, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to take all necessary and appropriate actions to establish and to maintain in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 164, Sections 34 and 47(c) of the General Laws, and in accordance with the rules, regulations, and orders of the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, a municipal light plant for all purposes allowable under the laws of the Commonwealth, including without limitation, the operation of a telecommunications system and any related services.
Motion made. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Rooks, 189 College Highway. I've been a member of the Ad hoc Technology Committee since 2020, and we've been doing some work to try to look at other options to bring fiber to the home in Southampton. I think, as we're all painfully aware, we're currently locked in with Spectrum as our only option, who has not communicated any intent to deploy fiber in our area. And honestly, without any competition, why would they? Many people have heard about what our neighbors are doing in Westfield, Holyoke, East Hampton, Northampton, with vendors like Whip City Fiber, FibroSonic, Holyoke Gas &amp; Electric. We've seen a lot of responses on Facebook recently as well as community surveys indicating that people seem to be eager to have additional services available in our town. This is the first step in that process. This process is not a short one, so this is something that can take years to deploy to cover all of Southampton. So the time really is now to get the ball rolling, not when you can't stream movies or work from home, which is becoming more and more common. And remember, a yes vote does not commit the town financially or legally. You're simply giving our committee and the Select Board the approval to continue our research and formulating a recommendation for the direction in which we go. So right now, we really have nothing to lose, but a great opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition?
Jim Seeny, High Street. It's a question, opposition.
Okay.
All right. Does this... If this were to pass and down the road, eventually there would be fiber cable in town. Would that affect the relationship at all with East Hampton Cable and the ability to provide online viewing of these meetings, et cetera, for citizens?
Somebody sent the media.
It would still take a second vote to move forward, but I don't see it doing anything but probably improving our... our relationship and East Hampton Media's ability to broadcast our meetings. A fiber, shall we say, load to utilization of East Hampton Media to send out the signal actually should improve that.
Thank you. Did that answer your question? Great. Anybody want to speak?
Hi, Kim Florrick, 26, Caitlin Way, Ad Hoc Technology Committee. And I just wanted to echo what David Rooks said about this is a non-binding vote. This just allows us to further investigate and look into what the possibility would be to bring fiber services to the home in Southampton. And it will be something that we... If you've looked at the handout, it's going to be something that we're desperately going to be needing as internet use and demand grows. And so, that's where we're at today. It's a non-binding vote to give the committee the green light to go ahead and do further investigation. And as Ed pointed out, it would need two votes in order to become an actual MLP. So, this is just one of two.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none, we'll vote for the motion under Article 28. Needs two-thirds majority. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 28 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 29, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that $200,000 be appropriated for the purposes of financing the following water pollution abatement facility projects: repairs, replacements, and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements with the Board of Health and residential property owners, including all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the general laws, that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $200,000 and issue bonds or notes, therefore, under MGL, Chapter 111, Section 127b and a half, and/or Chapter 29(c) of the general laws, that project and financing costs shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance with those agreements, but such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town. With the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), and in conjunction therewith, to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the projects or for the financing thereof, and that the Board of Health or other appropriate local body or official is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expand all funds available for the projects and to make any other actions necessary to carry out the projects.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Caitlin Rooks, 189 College Highway, Board of Health. The Commonwealth provides this funding for a community septic management program through a state revolving fund. So, the loan is offered at a 0% interest rate to the town of Southampton. We then collect a 5% interest rate, which goes into a revenue account for the town. Right now, loan prices are fairly competitive, but we don't know what it's going to be over the next several years. This program's been in place for about 20 years, and it allows for town citizens to borrow funds for failed septic systems. And it also allows for people to get funding within the absence of a credit check, but we make sure that the municipal taxes are paid, including real estate and motor vehicle excise taxes, water bill, and municipal user fees to reduce the risk of non-payment. Again, this has been in place for about 20 years, and there's also a future initiative to consider putting access to sewer around Hampton Pond, so this may be able to be used for tie-ins if that moves forward. I guess, any other questions?
Good. Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of the motion under Article 29? Any questions?
Teamwork. Thank you very much. Edward Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. I'm not speaking in opposition, but I have a question. And the question is, what's the process if someone needs to do a septic repair? How would they know that these funds are available? Would everybody know? Or would someone perhaps not be aware that they could apply for funds?
Good question. Who would like to answer that? Keeping everyone safe tonight.
I think you bring up a great point, and I think it's important that we make that information available to town residents, and we can certainly post that information on the town website or provide additional resources through the Board of Health. And usually, what happens is that person meets with the Board of Health to determine if this loan is appropriate for them. So, maybe we can try to increase the resources so people will be aware that they have access to this service.
Don't go away with the follow-up question. Edward.
Thank you. I think I forgot my question. Edward Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. The question is, if someone needs to do a septic repair in town, do they have to go to the planning board? I mean, how... I mean, you can put it on the town website, but I'm going back to that question. Would everybody know that these funds were available before they started spending money on their septic system?
Anyone want to address that?
I'm not sure if people would know about these funds or, you know, how to access the funding. Again, the only thing we could really do is share information about the program. I'm not sure if people would already be aware of the services or if they would have to seek out that information.
Okay, thank you. Answer your question, Edward? Good, thank you.
Hi, Patrice Crevier, 44, Crooked Ledge. So, this is a funding to help people to get loans to fix their septic system or to actually help residents fix problems with their septic systems? I'm not clear.
Okay, she'll answer it.
So, is this to just help people get loans if you need them? Is it not to actually help them fix their septic?
So, yes, this funding is to help people repair their septic systems. The people requesting the loan are responsible for paying it back at a 5% interest rate.
Can I answer your question? Great, thank you. Anyone else? Questions? Yes?
Carl Keener, County Road. I was under the impression, when this was first put together, that this, as this fund was repaid, that the funds being paid back were supposed to be rejuvenating it? Is that the case, or am I wrong?
The question was if the funds that were gained from using this program helped to rejuvenate the program, but the rates of interest are much lower than the actual cost of the loans themselves. So, this would essentially rejuvenate the program to authorize additional funds, and then they would be paid back by the people requesting the loan.
That answer your question? Oh, good. All right, any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll vote for the motion under Article 29. Needs two-thirds majority. All in favor of the motion on Article 29? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The... We need counters. I need a counter up here front? Please? All those who vote nay, please raise your hand and be counted.
One.
One nay. The motion under Article 29 passes by majority, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement with one nay. May I hear a motion for Article 30, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to set the limitation on expenditures for each revolving fund be established according to Article 30 of the June 7, 2022 annual town meeting.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak for this?
Mr. Moderator, annually, the revolving fund spending limits must be approved by town meeting. This is for that. Most of these spending limits remain the same as they were in fiscal year '22. Conservation Forestry has requested that their spending limit be increased from $10,000 to $20,000, and the Fire Department Brush Services has requested that theirs be increased from $5,000 to $20,000. The Council on Aging Van has decreased from $31,000 to $28,000 because $28,000 is the current level of the grant that we get to operate the Freda Van.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of the motion under Article 30? Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on... Yeah, come right up.
Dylan Maudsley, Fulmer Road. Just a question on the fire department portion. So, it's a $20,000 increase from $5,000 for brush fighting equipment, and that's in addition to the $18,000 that we're expending for the UTV. I was just curious what that extra $15,000 would be for? Is there a breakdown of what that extra $15,000 would be for?
Somebody want to answer about the breakdown?
John Workman, Fire Chief. Yeah, for the UTV that we're looking to purchase is about $24,000 to get a trailer that's enclosed so that when we bring it to a site and all department members are into the forest, we can enclose it to keep whatever gear is in the trailer there.
Yeah, a little closer.
Total cost for that is probably closer to... I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, but I want to say about $38,000. So, we're using some money from capital which is available, but as we collect money from brush permits, we want to utilize that money that we've collected to offset the town expenditure from capital money so that we can purchase this valuable piece of equipment. And so, with a cap of $5,000, we have $20,000 there. It's in our best interest to be able to use that money for this type of equipment.
Okay, thank you. Answer your question? Great. Anybody want to speak in opposition? Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion under Article 30. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 30 passes unanimously. And may I hear a motion? Well, hello. May I hear the motion for Article 31, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2023 and to allocate sums of money from the Community Preservation Fund as presented in Article 31 of the warrant of June 7, 2022 annual town meeting.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of hearing the report, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, please give the report.
I was unaware that I was going to be elected to do this tonight, but basically, what you're looking at in the article is the 10% allocation to each of the buckets, meaning the historic bucket, the community housing bucket, and the open space and recreation bucket. This is the normal 10% of the town monies that must be allocated to those three areas. The administrative expense, which is far less than 10%, is an annual expense of $7,500.
Thank you. May I hear a motion for Article 32, please? We did. We voted on the motion to hear it. We'll do it again. All those in favor of the act, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes majority. Let's hear the motion for Article 32, please.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $125,000 from the Community Preservation Account to the Housing Authority. Said funds to be transferred from Community Preservation Surcharge/Community Housing Account for the purpose of acquiring 1.32 acres of property and for associated costs of the acquisition to be used for affordable housing.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Jim Seeny, High Street, Chair of the Southampton Housing Authority. We're in favor of this warrant. I want to remind the citizens of town that right now, our SHI, our subsidized housing inventory under Massachusetts General Law is at 2%, not quite 2%. The Massachusetts General Law goal was 10% of all housing in town, so we're well below that. And I'll also remind folks that we are... Our owner-occupied number of affordable units in town is zero. So, the two, the not-quite 2% is rental units. So, we have zero owner-occupied units, and the purchase of this buildable property would allow us to, you know, work with nonprofit developers or someone like Habitat for Humanity to create an owner-occupied affordable unit in town. So, it's an important deal. Remind folks also that there are no... This is not a new tax. These are CPC funds that are collected. As Mr. Coles just recently mentioned, some of those are already always earmarked for housing. We have a substantial balance in that account, close to half a million dollars. We haven't had an opportunity to spend it because these kind of options that come along rarely. So, we can well afford this amount. It doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. Remind the town residents that everyone voted for CPC, CPA, back in the day. This is what it's for. And I'll also remind folks that if we are successful in this and successfully can create some housing on this property, that that unit will be contributing to the tax base. They'll be paying taxes. That will help the town.
Thank you. Who would like to speak in opposition?
Erin Dufresne, 22 East Street. I just have a clarifying question. It says here that the PERC tests were done in 2009, and I would just like to know how long PERC tests are valid for? Because as our climate changes and as we seem to have more rain every year, I'm wondering if those are going to be... If the validity of those will change over time?
The PERC tests, I believe, last two years if presented with a building at the time. Am I right, Jim? Do you want to talk about this? Hi. Okay. Teamwork.
Hardly. Jana Kane, Glendale Road. I checked with the Health Director today in the Health Department, and since there are four holes drilled, the PERC test does not expire. So, if we choose to do another PERC test, it would be at our expense, but it's not required at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on the motion for Article 32? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 32, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 32 passes by unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 33, please?
Town moderator said that he'd have you out of here by midnight. It may take me that long to read this motion. Mr. Moderator, move the town to vote a to appropriate the sum of $400,000 to appropriate the sum of $443,700 from the CPA Undesignated Account for the purpose of acquiring approximately 76 acres of land on Palmeroy Meadow Road, being Accessors Map, Accessors Map 8 Parcel 1, and described in a deed recorded with the Hampshire Registry of Deeds in Book 14282, page 287, and B, to acquire said property by gift, purchase, or otherwise for conservation, passive recreation, and/or water supply and drinking water protection purposes, said property being in the immediate recharge area for the Barnes Aquifer, said acquisition being subject to the protections of Article 97 of the Amendments of the Massachusetts Constitution, and C, to authorize the Water Commissioners to apply for a DWSP grant upon such terms and conditions as the Water Commissioners, with the approval of the Select Board, shall determine to be appropriate, and that the interest in said property shall be conveyed to the town under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Sections 39b and 41, as they may hereby be amended, and other Massachusetts statutes related to the water supply and conservation purposes. Said property to be managed and controlled by the Water Commissioners, and further that the Select Board and/or the Water Commissioners is authorized to submit on behalf of the town any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from any state and/or federal programs in aid of water supply and conservation land acquisition, including, but not limited to, all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the DWSP grant program, and to receive and accept such grants and/or reimbursements for this purpose, and/or any other grants or reimbursement programs in any way connected with the scope of this article, and that the Select Board and/or the Water Commissioners be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any instruments, including a grant of a perpetual water supply and conservation restriction to the Commonwealth or a nonprofit corporation or trust that meets the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 184, Sections 31 through 33, as may be necessary to effect said acquisition or obtain such grant. And in the event that any such grant is awarded, said awarded funds shall be used to reimburse the CPA Undesignated Account, and D, to authorize the Conservation Commission, the Water Commissioners, and/or the Select Board, and any other appropriate town officers to take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out this acquisition and the grant of a perpetual conservation restriction in the, in the intent of this article.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
As gallery owner, I photograph nature's beauty and nature preserves yearly. This year, I dedicated my time to photograph lands that were assisted by Kestrel Land Trusts to become, to conserve. There is no conflict of interest. I don't get any payment from Kestrel. I actually give them the images, but it might appear as a conflict, and that's most important. If it appears as a conflict, it is a conflict. So for this article, I step down, and I have our deputy town moderator, Doric Dodds, take over.
We've had a motion and a second. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
We will go ahead with the discussion. Who would like to speak in favor of the motion under Article 33?
Tim Goddett, Water Commissioner. So like was already said, the land is in the immediate recharge area for the Barnes Aquifer. And of course, the Barnes Aquifer provides the drinking water for the town of Southampton. And this property is, it's, it's only one mile from our town well. And it's also only about a mile from the well which provides water for East Hampton. And, you know, we frequently use East Hampton water. So, you know, the Water Commissioners are certainly in full support of this article.
Anyone else in favor? Any other discussions at all?
Hi there, my name is Bridgette Likely. I'm a Conservation Manager with Kestrel Land Trust, a nonprofit organization whose mission is to conserve and care for farms, forests, and riverways in the Connecticut River Valley. And we're pleased to be able to support the Southampton Water Department and the Water Commission for this proposal to acquire 76 acres. As was mentioned, it is within the immediate recharge area of the Barnes Aquifer, and we'll provide, provide protection for groundwater for both Southampton's sole existing wellhead as well as East Hampton's backup water supply for Southampton. In addition, with protection of this land, it would provide passive recreation and public access would be allowed on the land. And it would preserve the scenic and agricultural character of the land. So we believe this is an excellent opportunity to provide the community of Southampton with significant open space protection that meets several community goals. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else at all?
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. I speak as a citizen in strong agreement with this article and this acquisition, but I also speak as chairperson of the Open Space Committee. And we know that there has been an application for funding from the state for drinking water protection. At this point, we don't know the results of the application, and therefore, we are crossing our fingers. We can't make guarantees. But I will say, with the assistance of Kestrel's Bridgette Likely, as well as many people in this town, we were able to put together a very strong application for the funding for the grant. So I can't say what's going to happen, but I do believe it would be to the entire benefit of the town to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Seeny, High Street, with yet another question. I thought I heard that some of this open space land could be used, I think I heard, for farming. I'd like that clarified. And if, if for farming, what type of farming? Some farming uses chemicals or et cetera. So I think it's important to know what farming, if any, will be done on this land.
Okay, do we have an expert capable now?
Yes, under the proposed conservation restriction that would be held by Kestrel Land Trust, limited agriculture would be allowed. This would need to be approved by the Department of Environmental Protection, which would prohibit chemicals that would damage water supply. And so the Likely proposed agricultural use is simply mowing for hay.
Any further discussion then? Seeing none, we'll vote on it. Those in favor of the motion under Article 33, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 33 passes unanimously.
Thank you, Doric Dodds. That concludes our business for the night. I want to entertain a motion now to dissolve our annual town meeting.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This special, this annual town meeting is dissolved. Thank you. Thank you. This is Dorothy, Town Clerk, Carl Keener, for disinfecting the mics. Ryan Arnold.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Safe home. We made it in record time today.